May I have your attention, please? We will go ahead and begin with the recognitions for tonight. I think we only have one, which is the VIPS. So if you'd please like to come up.
Good evening. I'm Haley Miller with Volunteers in Public Schools. We are excited to be here tonight to recognize our outstanding partner of the month. This month, our outstanding partner is BRG, Baton Rouge General. At VIPS, we're always looking for new opportunities for business professionals to get into our schools who have busy schedules and can't commit to a weekly time slot. And this year, we launched a new model called Tag a Friend. The idea is simple but powerful, but two business professionals share one student. They alternate their visits, so they're taking turns meeting with their student every single week. And this approach ensures the student is met with consistently and builds a meaningful connection while also allowing those business professionals to be involved. BRG was the very first organization to adopt this model and has been a pivotal partner in its development and execution. We are excited to see the success of this partnership alongside Baton Rouge General employees, and we are excited to see the impact it makes on students' long-term reading and math levels. Tonight, we have Ramon Hardy and Brianna Williams with Baton Rouge General, who are going to share a little bit about their perspective of this partnership.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Well, as she mentioned, it is a pleasure, of course, to have the opportunity to see, really, two worlds collide. So it's very interesting because I actually serve on the VIPS board as the vice chair, but I'm also employed by Baton Rouge General, who has had definitely a focus and an emphasis on making sure that we get within the schools because we understand the importance of reaching the students at a very young and critical age. We understand that if you're able to reach them at that point, then it's going to ultimately, of course, set them up for success throughout their time within school, but also feed, really, essentially, our workforce at a certain point. So we understand that if we invest now, then some of those students will ultimately become, as we envision in Baton Rouge General employees. And so we felt that it was important to be able to start to utilize our workforce. We know that a lot of times, professionals can feel that it's difficult to commit to something on a weekly basis, so we could task them with saying, hey, you just go into the schools twice a month. We felt that that would be a lift that they would be able to essentially achieve and not really have too much of an issue with. And so we're really excited to have the opportunity to partner with VIPS. We see this as a launch point, that other organizations will also begin to see this model and feel that their professionals can also partner with it. So we're really excited to have the opportunity to partner with VIPS. Anything you would like to say, Brianna?
Hi, my name is Brianna Williams. I am also employed with Baton Rouge General as the school partner liaison. So along with Park Medical Academy, we're also partnered with Capital Elementary and Capital High School to increase literacy rates, graduation rates, and also feed children into the healthcare system because that is a system that has a demand for jobs and roles. So thank you all for recognizing us.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for all that you do. And Mr. Lewis, our board member Lewis? Thank you. That concludes the recognitions. The regular board meeting will start at 5 o'clock.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. We are here for our regular board meeting, October 16, 2025. Meeting, we will start with our invocation and pledge. The invocation will be led by school board member Nathan Russ, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Cadet Second Lieutenant Serenity Smith of Scottlenville High School, accompanied by Sergeant First Class Retired Titus Blue. Would you all please stand?
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Father in heaven, we praise you for your goodness and for your mercy. We ask, Lord, that you would show us what your will is for us, for our system of public schools, for the children in the families of our parish. Show us your will and your wisdom so that we can be a part of it. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sergeant First Class Blue, the Army instructor at D. Scottlenville Magnet High School. On behalf of my principal, Mr. Paul Jackson, administrations, faculty, and staff, I bring greetings, Mr. Lamont Cole, Superintendent of Schools, Board President, and members of our school board. It is my distinct honor and pleasure to introduce one of the outstanding GRLTC cadets at Scottlenville Magnet High School, Student Cadet Second Lieutenant Serenity Smith. Serenity is a sophomore in the GRLTC program, currently serving on the GRLTC Battalion Staff as S2 Intelligence Security Officer. She is a member of the color guard, drill team, and the Hornish Battalion Sabre Team. Serenity has been selected as the Hornish Battalion's Let One Cadet of the Year. Serenity maintains an impressive cumulative grade point average of 4.0. She is a member of the varsity girls' basketball team. She's a magnet ambassador and was recently selected by her peers as Scottlenville Miss Sophomore. Student Cadet Smith plans to graduate from Scottlenville Magnet High School, maintaining a 4.0 GPO, plans to attend Southern University, majoring in nursing. She plans to continue her education and become a pediatrician. Ladies and gentlemen, here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I present to you Student Cadet Second Lieutenant Serenity Smith of D. Scottlenville Magnet High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of East Baton Rouge Parish School System, and not only East Baton Rouge Parish School System, but from one alumnus of Scottlenville, to you, congratulations and thank you. Keep up all the good work.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So now we have our roll call. Madam Secretary. Present.
District Seven Vice President Goday.
Here.
District One, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District Two, Mr. Lannis. District Three, Ms. Powell Lewis.
Present.
District Five, Mr. Lewis.
Present.
District Six, Mr. Russ.
Present.
District Eight, Ms. Sule.
Here.
District Nine, Mr. Martin.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. And next, we're moving to item B, which is the meeting minutes. Approval of the school board minutes of the September 4, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting and the September 18, 2025 Regular Board Meeting, as published in the Official Journal. Do I have a motion?
I have to approve.
There we go. We have Mr. Martin and Mr. Russ. He was, they were on it. Public comment? No public comment? And I don't have, oh, Ms. Powell Lewis. Oh, okay. So. Madam? Oh, all in favor of the meeting minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
All those in opposition? Madam Secretary. Okay, all right. Do a roll call. Coach thing, if you don't mind. Oh, he can't.
Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Powell Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Russ?
Yay.
Mr. Goday?
Yes.
Ms. Sule?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving along to item C, information only, monthly financial report and personnel changes. And that's for your information only. Moving along. Item D, receive as information. I have it to my superintendent. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the board. First and foremost, let me say a Happy Bosses Day to all of you. I put your gift in the mail. You should have received it on a, you hadn't, you hadn't gotten it? You'll get it on November 31st. No, I'm joking. I did, I did send something, I did send something to you. I'm just joking. Thank you to those of you who are here with us this evening. I'll take a small moment of personal privilege to recognize a very dear friend of mine who drove from Alexandria just to come to this board meeting, an attorney who works actually in our juvenile court. And I went to see some, help out with some students today. So Ms. Tiffany Sanders, thanks for joining us this evening. We glad, stand up so everybody can see you. Glad to have you with us this afternoon. Tiffany was my friend in college who had a car. I didn't, so she drove us, drove us around. Happy to be back for another month of being a superintendent. Thanks for allowing me to serve again. Last week marked the end of the first nine weeks and the midpoint of the first semester. A lot of effort had been put into a smooth first semester, so I want to thank our teachers and our staff, and more importantly, I want to thank our students for an outstanding first nine weeks of school as we made it to our fall break. We continue to focus on the core commitments of our strategic plan, which are student achievement, operational excellence, and employee development. During the month of October, we celebrate multiple groups and causes to show our appreciation for our dedicated professional staff and our talented students. October is National Principals Month. I'm grateful for the leadership of our principals throughout the district. As a former principal, I recognize their commitment to instructional excellence, safe and welcoming environments, and the growth of every student and teacher under their care. They deserve to be celebrated as the heartbeat of our system. October is also Red Ribbon Month. The eye care department, in collaboration with our school, continues to promote a drug-free community. Students are participating in a variety of activities to celebrate October 23rd and 31st, as been designated as Red Ribbon Week. The district celebrated World Mental Health Day on October 10th. Staff and students wore green to recognize the importance of mental health, as the green is a symbol of hope, renewal, and growth. I had an opportunity to participate in a mental health day at Scottlenville High School with our school board member Carla Powell and Darius Lanis served on the panel, was able to speak with the kids, learned a lot about some of the trauma they are experiencing, and we talked a great deal about how we can support them better. And they shared some insight onto what's happening in our city with our students. So very, very productive conversation. Glad to have been able to do so. Throughout the month of October, you will also see pink across our system as we promote breast cancer awareness and recognize and honor those who have been affected by it. Thank you to our human resource team at the central office, who have organized and scheduled events and activities as we stand together in hope, strength, and honor those who have been impacted. We celebrate the survivors among us and remember those who have gone before us. Today, yesterday, excuse me, today ends Latin American Heritage Month. Myself, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Smith, and a whole host of our team were able to participate in an event today at Baylor High School where the kids celebrated Latin American Heritage Month, so excited for that. And also, we were able to participate in the first showcase at Park Medical Academy, where all of the students showcased the things they are learning in the medical profession. It was really exciting to see. Members of our district leadership team have completed 26 in-person data reviews at nearly one-third of the sites over the last four weeks. So we've been digging in, looking at what is happening at our schools, particularly starting with the more challenging environments, talking about the data, talking about enrollment, really trying to identify where we can best provide support. The information we have received from the initial data reviews has been wonderful in helping us to determine where we need to deploy resources in an effort to help our schools be better. I will have a report for you at our next meeting around the first 26 data reviews, and we're going to talk about what we've seen, what we've learned, and then where we think we need to make some transitions. We cannot wait when we recognize we can do better, and so we're going to ask the board to assist us in helping to provide that support. The purpose of the deep data dive is to push schools into need of extra support, to collaboratively analyze first quarter data, identify key areas of need, and provide timely technical assistance and instructional support to address identified gaps across department. Mental attendance and support is provided to ensure that each school has a plan that is strategic, data-driven, and aligned with the district goals for continuous improvement. East Baton Rouge Parish School System has been selected to partner with LSU's Integrative Community Studies Program for a four-year inclusive post-secondary model, integrating workforce, align credentials, and preparing students with intellectual disabilities for competitive gainful employment. LSU was awarded the Transition in Post-Secondary Programs for Students with Intellectual Disabilities Grant, and will partner with EBR to provide this opportunity to students with intellectual disabilities from the ages 18 to 21. Under the area of Operational Excellence, we're almost halfway through the 2025 open enrollment period. I can't stress to all of our employees and us, you must log in and enroll for your benefit package. We want to thank everyone who has already acted to renew their health benefits. As a reminder, everyone must log in and review and select the benefits or health plans. Will not roll over for next year. They will not roll over for next year. All coverage expires on December 31st unless employees take action. Please make sure selections have been finalized before 4:30 PM deadline on October 31st. We're going to continue to send out reminders and information, and I want to encourage employees, it takes less than five minutes. Unless you're going to make significant changes to your benefit plan, it takes less than five minutes. So don't be like many people and wait to the last minute. And if you come to the benefits office here at Central Office, a team will sit with you and walk you through the process so you can get it done very easily, very quickly, and have any of your questions answered. The first cohort of 20 schools have received their devices for the new visitor management system, and weekly online training is available for sites to support implementation. Provision digital cameras are currently in use on buses throughout our transportation system. They have proven to be very valuable as we streamline operations for increased efficiency, transparency, and safety and accountability. Under the area of employee development, tomorrow is October 17, is a district-wide professional development day. Professional learning opportunities have been designed to take a closer look at implementation of high-quality curriculum to enhance daily instruction, alignment with the new Louisiana Education Rubric Evaluation System. Instructional staff will explore proven approaches for less internalization, differentiated instruction, text-dependent questioning, and writing and discussion routines, and access to equitable grade-level text. The goal is to provide practical strategies to strengthen daily instruction. The goal is to provide practical strategies to strengthen daily instruction while saving planning time. During the month of October, the Human Resource Department is training about 40 substitute teachers in evidence-based instructional and behavioral practices to better support diverse learners, including ESS and ESL students through cross-departmental collaboration and community partnerships. Our Human Resource Department is also hosting a world language recruitment event at Tara, Belair High School, and Broadmoor High to attract candidates for current vacancies. HR is also hosting our annual Fall Fling Recruitment and Retention Event on November 1st at Broadmoor Elementary. Anyone interested in joining our team of teachers, paraprofessionals, and child nutrition program cooks, or managers and bus operators should attend this event and visit our website to learn more about the benefits of EBR schools. Come join our team. We need you. Finally, students will be out of school tomorrow, Monday, and Tuesday, and all district sites will be closed on Monday and Tuesday in our observers of fall break. Students and staff, you've worked hard over the first quarter of the year. You deserve time off. Please get some rest. Please be safe. Please take some time to read. Please come back. We look forward to seeing you all again on Wednesday, October 22nd, when the district resumes normal operations. Tonight, we have an outstanding young lady who is going to come and present the work she is doing at Marydale Elementary School. And board members, I want to remind you that Marydale Elementary is one of the schools we transitioned to our early learning center. So the only grades we have there are pre-K to second grade. And I'm excited, Ms. Wells is here tonight. Fun fact about Ms. Wells, she herself attended Marydale Elementary as a student, and she returned last year as the principal, and she is doing a phenomenal job there, one of the best we have in our district. So at this time, I want to introduce to some and present to others the principal at Marydale Elementary, Ms. Casey Wells.
Well, thank you for that wonderful introduction, Superintendent Cole. And board members, thank you for allowing me to come and share tonight all the great things we have going at Marydale. We have made some significant changes in the last few years, and our data, it's showing it. So I'm very pleased with where we're headed here. Our enrollment, we're sitting at about 270. I think that grew just as I was leaving to about 273. So they're coming every day. So that's, that's exciting. We now serve pre-K through second grade. Our subgroup percentages, African-American, we're at about 98%. ESL, 1%. ESS, 13%. 504, 1%. Homeless, 3%. And fully anticipate that ESS and that 504 populations to grow a little, just because, you know, a lot of these students have not been in school before. And so we are working to identify those in need who need additional supports. So dibbles, this is where we are. And as you can see, the students are starting the race. We're just starting the race with our littles. So that you can see in kindergarten, you know, we have 60% well below, but as we started looking into it, a lot of our kindergarteners did not attend pre-K. So we continue, we want to make that push because pre-K, early childhood is so important.
Ms. Wells, you might want to say that again. We have kindergarteners, this is their first time in school.
Yes, we have lots of kindergarteners, their first time in school. And we still have open seats for pre-K. Bring them, have them join us because we do have open seats, and it's important. The earlier we get them in, the better we are. But also, this dibbles, you know, it's a one-minute test. They've never taken it before. It's a little nerve-wracking because they're doing it with another person, not, not their teacher. So we know that this data is going to move, and we have lots of good things in place to, to help it move. So this is where we're going. My school goal this year, and it may seem high, but there's no reason why we shouldn't get there. I would like 70% or more of our students, K to two at Marydale, to be, to score benchmark or above on the dibbles. And we're going to do that by continuing to implement our high-quality instructional materials, our Hegarty lessons every day, our dibbles burst interventions, AMIRA, and we have chosen intervene as our high-dose tutoring program this year. We're making Marydale marvelous. Here are a few of the things that we have put in place. We have paraprofessionals in every classroom. So our ratio is sitting at 1 to 10. Huge. That is so beneficial to us. And then I decided our teachers and our paraprofessionals, they need the same training. If we want our paraprofessionals to be able to support our students in the classroom like the teachers can, they have to have the same training. So our paraprofessionals are required to attend every PLC meeting with our teacher so that they are learning, growing, and planning together. We're utilizing the co-teaching model so that when you walk into a Marydale classroom, you should know who the teacher is because the parent and the teacher are both teaching. We are implementing daily small group instruction. We have daily intervention time built into our master schedule. Limited Chromebook time. Our babies don't need to be on the Chromebook for hours on end. Nothing takes the place of a teacher, especially with these little ones. And so I have limited their time. They are only allowed Chromebook time when it's intervention or workstation time. And even then, they're doing AMIRA where they're practicing their sounds and they're doing those things. We're focusing, of course, on the foundational skills. We're providing in-person and virtual PD to parents. We have to educate our parents. That's a huge. Parents want to help their children, but sometimes they may not know how. I've never met a parent who said, "I don't want to help my child." And so we have to give them the tools and the resources to be able to do so. So once a month, we will be planning virtual and in-person parent meetings. Because, you know, many of our parents may not have transportation. So we're going to start doing some of these things virtually so that they have, they have an opportunity to participate. And then we're also implementing the writing revolution because we know that when our students get to third grade, they have to do the writing revolution in guidebooks. And so as a feeder school, my kids are going over to Glen Oaks Park. So we're on the phone all the time, "Hey, Mr. Williams, hey, look, this is what I'm doing to support. What else do you need me to do? Because I know where we are, and this is what I'm going to send to you, so get ready." Because they're going to come to you ready, and it's my job to make sure that they are. And so we work very closely together. We also will have literacy nights together, math and science nights together, big buddy programs together where his fifth grade will come and read to my kindergarteners. Because we have to, these schools have to work in conjunction. Because number one, we want our littles to feel comfortable when they go there, and it's going to take both of us to raise these scores. It's not just one school. We're combined now. That's the way I look at it. We're combined, and we have to help each other. So. This is probably one of my favorite slides. We have been sitting in the 80s, 80s, 80s for attendance. We are up to 93% attendance. Yay! And then my teacher attendance is fabulous. They come to work. So in August, we were at 99%. September, the little germs hit. We had 94%, but we are still staying in that 90 percentile for teachers and students coming to school every day. And we celebrate it because that, that's where the magic happens. You're not going to learn if you're not in school. So these are some of the things that we are doing. I just wanted to kind of outline and show you some of our staff and our students. We have second-grade ambassadors who meet and greet the people on campus, teacher-led small groups, the whole group instruction. As you can just see, we have a cheer team to support our sports. We have the dibbles night was such a huge hit, the parents had to come and actually take the dibbles assessment and practice it in one-minute timeframes. And they were like, "Oh, my goodness, this is stressful." And I was like, "Imagine it for little ones." That's right. But they know exactly now what their students have to do. I do Monday morning stories, so if anybody wants to sign up and do a Monday morning story, and usually my stories are with lessons that we carry throughout the week to kind of support our SEL. And then we celebrated National Dot Day. And then we have Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, which are all housed at school. We do club days, so parents don't have to worry about transporting children or anything like that. We actually have time built in to do club days. We had a Scholastic Book Fair picnic. We do a Student of the Month. You know, we have our PBIS. And this is new this year. We started a Hello, Marydale News Show, and our kids love to broadcast. So they have the microphones, and they'll go to the classrooms and highlight different teachers and different things. And so they just think that is amazing. They, they love that. So. And I would be remiss if I didn't let you guys know about our partners. Because without our partners, it would be very hard for the, the success we're having at Marydale to happen. LSU Lab School has been sponsoring a lot of things for us. They have given us school supplies. We're working with them to do an art auction for our kids to do our fundraiser. Dr. Early from LDOE has partnered, hey, whatever PD you need, whatever you guys need, just let us know. Councilman Derrick Hurst always calling, hey, what do you, what do you need? Atmos Energy has agreed, and this is what I'm so excited about, Atmos Energy has agreed to buy us a literacy, it's a, it's a book vending machine. And the kids earn coins, and they get to put the coin in, and it talks to them, and they get to pick a book. Because the goal is to put literature in their hands. The decodables are great, but they need to be exposed to other types of literature as well. And so if I can give every student on my campus a book and let them be happy about it to take it home, but not only did we get the machine, Delta Sigma Theta is stocking the machine for us for three years. Yes. And so we love VIPS. VIPS has been just a huge help to Marydale this year. So I'm very excited, and I want to continue to grow with these partnerships. And, but yeah, come by and see us at Marydale. We have some great things happening there.
Stay right there, Ms. Wells, don't leave. Mr. Martin, I, I like to think that as Marydale is part of the initial phase one of start times, the 93% attendance rate by teachers and students is a testament to that shift, and so it's working. The data is showing us that it's working.
That, and that, that has been a smooth transition for us, especially with our buses, sharing buses with Glen Oaks Park. That has worked fabulously well. When our first bus pulls out, we let Mr. Williams know, hey, the buses are on their way to pick up yours, and it just flows, and it's very smooth, and everybody's tagged, everybody gets home every day, and it's, it's, it's simple, and it has worked, and it has been great. So the early start times for our little ones has definitely helped because they're not falling asleep by the end of the day now. So it does help.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Powell Lewis?
Hi, Ms. Wells.
Hi.
Thank you so much for sharing this report. One of my questions first is, how can you add me to the list for the Story Day?
Okay, I will send you the link.
Thank you. And then the other is, I know in the past you guys have had an active parent-teacher organization. Is that still existing on your campus?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and tell us just a little bit about that because that's one of my, my goals for our district is that majority of our elementary and middle schools will have active PTAs or PTOs. Could you speak to that more?
Yes, ma'am. So we, they had changed some of the rules a little bit this year. So we're, we're continuing to work to get it up and running. Last year was the first year that Marydale had it. I implemented it last year for the first time in years that it had had it, and parents and grandparents absolutely loved it. And they showed up, they showed out, and they helped us. They helped us, and they loved it. We also did a grandparents' gridiron club because the grandparents were like, hey, we want something too. So we were like, okay, well, we'll have grandparents' gridiron, and then we'll have our PTO. And both were very active. They would come and read, they would come and do things for the teachers, volunteer, whatever we needed, especially when we did, you know, our different events, it was like trunk-or-treat or, you know, just different fun things for the kids. The parents were always there helping out.
Thank you so much. So it sounds like Mr. Kuzin, we're back on it. Thank you.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Ms. Wells, thank you for that fantastic report. Kind of like we singing from the same hymn book a little bit. I love the fact that you are working in collaboration with Park. I love the fact that your teachers are coming to school because you are investing in them. It's more than just a paycheck. When you invest in people, they understand that you want to get the best out of them. Everybody needs encouragement. And I am so glad you're standing there because in a sense of real transparency, when I walked out of here two weeks ago, I had serious doubts if I ever wanted to come back.
Well, there's good things happening.
Because it appears that all we talk about is things that don't involve children. And I'll speak to that a little bit later. But again, thank you for all you're doing. Keep investing in your students. Keep investing in your children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to give you a kudos as well. I had the opportunity to visit on the first day of school, and it was wonderful. So yeah, I appreciate that and all of the things that you're doing. And it was also nice to know that you had some vacancies, that you still have vacancies. So that's a plus. And so any other board members have any other comments? All right. So thank you so kindly.
Thank you so much.
Moving along to item E, reports from board appointees to committees or agencies. Ms. Powell Lewis?
Thank you. I am just elated to share that I had the opportunity yesterday to participate in the EBR Schools Foundation Board Retreat or Planning Session, and it was quite informative. I'm sure that Ms. Lightfoot will share more details as time goes on. But we were able to set our priorities for the year, including how we will continue to, number one, support students in workforce development, and then also in the initiatives that our superintendent has set forth, and then also beginning to talk about how we can even align grant, grant funds for teachers even more intentionally. So I'm sure that there is additional detail that will, will be coming as time goes on. But we will say this, that if you know of a partner, a partner who is very generous in our community, we will gladly receive their partnership. Feel free to get with me or Ms. Lightfoot or any of the other EBR Foundation Board members for more information. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell Lewis. Any other board member have any reports? Mr. Lewis?
VIPS Partners in Education, you know, AI has become the buzzword all over the country, all over the world. VIPS is an outstanding organization that does, I mean, they work tirelessly to help improve the lives of our young people. And they're going to do a luncheon, AI in Education, and it will be held October 30th at 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the main lobby of the Goodwood Library. Our own Ms. Amy Jones, Chief Technology Officer, will be one of the presenters. We're also going to have a young man, Myrick Hobbs, who's a senior at Liberty High School. He's going to be a panelist. And a Dr. Richard Swartz, he's a faculty coordinator for artificial intelligence at the Louisiana State University. He will be there as well. So if you've got a couple hours you want to spend and learn about AI and how the, the impact on education, October 30th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the main library on Goodwood. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Moving along to item F, and there you have it again, Coach. Drinking a little water.
Just one minute, a couple minutes of personal privilege. And, and Ms. Wells, I'm, I'm so glad that you made your presentation. Couple weeks ago, I made some comments about teachers and whether they were qualified or highly qualified. That language doesn't exist anymore, it's certificate, and it's a certificate and, what's the other word? Degreed. Degreed and certificate. And I made some comments that may have been taken out of context, and they may not have been. I apologize to any teacher or school leader that I may offend it. But the bottom line is, Ms. Wells, you're investing in your teachers. We've got to invest in our teachers if we want our children to progress. And I made the comment about teachers standing in front of students not really understanding some of the content that they would teach, and that's the gospel truth. We can't hold kids accountable if they're not being prepared by people who are responsible and accountable for the content that they're teaching. So again, if I offended any teachers, I'm sorry. I did not mean to. My mother raised two kids and taught school for 34 years. So I understand the sacrifices teachers have to make. I understand the sacrifices their kids have to make. kids have to make. So again, if I offended you, I'm sorry, teachers. If I offended anybody else, too bad. Thank you. And I mean, okay, here we go, the consent agenda. The follow, the following items are to be approved as part of the consent agenda and are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon with one motion. There will be no separate discussions of items unless a board member saw a request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as an item on the regular agenda for a separate vote preceding the last item on the regular agenda. Resolution, bond purchase. Consideration of a request for the approval of the bond purchase agreement for the sale of 40 million limited tax bonds, Series 2025, and to be adopted, and to be adopted, this resolution providing for the reoccurring of debt and insurance, is that, yeah, insurance of bonds.
Issuance.
Issuance of bonds, that means you're giving them out. Therefore authorizing the assurance and, what is that?
Issuance.
Issuance, again, giving them out. And delivery, and delivery of the bonds and related matters. Ms. Lopez. Resolution, mileage, consideration and adoption of resolution for the purpose of levying mileage effective for the 2026 assessment rolls as required by law. Ms. Lopez. Extern agreement, Louisiana State University, consideration of a request for the approval of an amend, amendment to the extern agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agricultural and Mechanical College in the amount of $107,933 to extend the agreement for one year to provide up to six interns. Funding source, general fund, Ms. Williams and Dr. Smothers. Professional service contract, Data to Instruct Academy, consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Data to Instruction Academy in the amount of $81,836 to provide professional learning workshops. Funding source, Gates Grant, Ms. Okowski and Ms. Edwards. Charter policy revision, HA, consideration of a request for the approval of all proposed amendments to the East Baton Rouge Parish Charter School Policy HA as identified as the, as identified in the supporting document. Six, Charter School Policy Revision, Chapter Eight, Charter School Renewals, consideration of a request for the approval of the following proposed options regarding the East Baton Rouge Parish School Systems Charter School Policy AH. Chapter Eight, Charter School Renewals, Page 6063. Option B, amending the standards and terms of charter school initial and subsequent renewals for district authorized Type I charters for schools as outlined in the supporting documents. Board Member Recommendation. Charter Policy Revision, Thirteen, Amendment to Local Authorized Charters, consideration of a, consideration of a request for the approval of the following proposed options regarding the East Baton Rouge Parish School Systems Charter School Policy AH, Chapter Thirteen. Amendments to Local, Amendments to Locally Authorized Charters, Material Amendments, Section E, Page 79. Option B, authorizing material amendments regarding the additional, the addition of new grade, of new grade levels or changes in the student enrollment, enrollment which results in enrollment in excess of 120%, I think should be on there, I don't know. Okay, 120% of the total number of schools set forth in the school's charter by any charter, for any charter excluding meeting with a current letter grade of C or higher or an equivalent SPS, but excluding the provisions allowing a current letter grade of D or higher on equivalent SPS and a progress index equivalent to a letter grade A. So moved.
Thank you. Are there any items that any board members would like to remove separately from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove item three.
Okay, that's three. Any other items? Anybody else? Okay. So, okay. Mike seconded. Do we have any? Yeah.
Ms. Swartz, I want to have some conversation, a little bit more conversation around item one.
So you want to pull it?
Yes.
Okay, so one. I'm sorry, that's one. So one and three, other ones pulled. All right, is that, is that it? All right, so we now go to public comment. Yeah, we have all of them. Yeah, I know, all of them, one, yeah, okay.
There are some online.
Okay, give us one second.
Let me just refresh. We have online comments for item F5, Charter Policy Revision HA from Ms. Jennifer Landry. We know what happens with a decade of no oversight. Proposed policy given charters more time without real supervision is dangerous. Other school choice programs such as magnet program, which over time with no supervision, became economically segregated. Right now in all of our schools, the higher the SP score, SPS score, the less poor and disabled students served. Magnets and charters hoard resources intended for students. They create administrative jobs and travel funds for adults in exchange for social media optics as they exploit children on as props to keep the cash flowing. We need better policies to make sure charters and magnet schools are here to serve all students and are held accountable. In light of a district that will likely suffer more enrollment losses as a result of the school closures or consolidations, we need to get these policies right for the kids. Thank you. Again, this is on F5 from Natalie Abear. The district really did a disservice by not having a workshop for this whole policy where the public could ask tough questions. Please vote no. Many districts are currently revising charter policy to be more efficient and to hold charters accountable for serving every child by not kicking kids with behavioral problems or absences to the traditional public schools. Just because the adults don't like the paperwork doesn't mean we should give them an extension. Charter schools should have two to four years to figure it out. At the beginning of this charter policy, there is some line about charters are not responsible for keeping open schools that would otherwise be failing. That sounds like a pass and that charters can just walk with no accountability for what they did after the money is gone and the state is coming down their back. Did we learn nothing from all the children displaced by the IDEA school disaster? EBR schools recommended closing IDEA, but the board declined. Item Six, this is Charter Policy Revision, Chapter Eight, Charter School Renewals from Maya Williams. Ten-year renewals, the audacity. EBR schools need new rules on operators like other districts, such as operators must give up to 18 months' notice of plans to close campuses and return any unused fund within 45 days of closure. Charter officials cannot sit on their board and also hold employment with the same organization. And schools can't pressure students with absences or discipline problems into voluntary, voluntarily transferring. Those are examples of effective policies. This policy is unfit for a district struggling with enrollment issues. The board needs to go back, do research and write effective policy that will lead to better outcomes and more accountability. Remember Proverbs, he who oppresses the poor taunts his maker. This policy is very much written to favor operators' pocketbooks and not student outcomes. Please vote no and come back with a better policy. F7, Charter Policy Revision, Chapter Thirteen, Amendments to Locally Authorized Charter from Mildred Drummond, I'm sorry. Why is there no need to show demand for increasing grade levels? Where are these students going to come from? Isn't the district on decline because of closures and consolidations? We have already seen what happens when a system expands enrollment or comes up with a new magnet without consulting the community. Not every program is meant to expand or should expand without evidence of demand and support. If charters operate like magnet, they'll just go to the board and say they're going to expand and repurpose money for students that never show up. There is not always demand, then, and then a community is stuck with staff and students being held responsible for the implementation of someone else's bad idea. We need to hold all schools to a high standard, including magnets and charters, which often put excessive pressure on schools to turn out theme-related products and performances, even if the cost is student and staff well-being. Not everywhere, not everywhere should expand. And I will refresh. That concludes the online comments.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. But we do have a public comment card, Ms. Tanya Newman. Nyman, I'm sorry.
That's right. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't expect F1 to be pulled. So I thought I was going to have to just let my comments on the charter school update from last week stand. So I just want to reiterate, as we, as y'all acknowledge, or at least Mr. Goday acknowledged last week, that a lot of the updates are prescribed by the state law. But I think it's important, it still pains me that there isn't much pushback from this board or acknowledgement in the ways in which that state charter school law is effectively eliminating public education by empowering boards members who are appointed rather than elected and that then enter into business agreements that enrich the private businesses that are associated with those charter management organizations and with national and international companies, instead of investing our tax dollars right here in East Baton Rouge Parish, which is how a public entity is supposed to work. And so I just hope that people also understand that that charter school law is actually what also laid the groundwork for all the breakaways in East Baton Rouge Parish. On the one hand, it created the incentive to break away and also it created the justification because the charter school model depends upon a fundamentally flawed school accountability system, which targets districts that have a high concentration of students who live in poverty. And so they are targeted for state takeover and privatization, i.e. an erosion of voting rights. And so in order to save themselves, they will break away, otherwise they risk being taken over and privatized. But I also want to point out that one part of that update that y'all were forced to retake is allowing charter school affiliates to use their overall average of their demographics to demonstrate that they're abiding by the law to serve a commensurate population that is, reflects the body within the East Baton Rouge Parish or the parish they operate in. And so that means that a school, let's say there's two charter schools and one school has a nearly all-white population and they have another school that has a nearly all African, well, I don't know what the percentages would actually be, but a predominantly African-American population. And so that the schools remain segregated, but they'll be able to claim that they're actually meeting those targets because the average of their students. And so I know we've struggled with integrating our schools over the past, whatever many years now. But the fact is, is that we were making headway on that integration. They may have been de facto segregated in many places, but at least they were no longer legally segregated, right? There was no law mandating that they be segregated. And now the charter school law is returning us to that model and it is a heartbreak. It's a tragedy. And I just hope we all can acknowledge that when we are forced, when our local boards are forced to adopt these laws that are dictated by a state that certainly doesn't have the best interest of East Baton Rouge Parish at heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nyman. Were there any other public comments on the consent because of the change? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. All right. Do I have a, oh, yeah, I was just making sure. Okay. Why is that cute? I know. Okay, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask two, two or three questions for clarification. I know we talked about this two weeks ago and I just want to make sure that we are speaking clearly and, and making sure that we're informing the public. For those who did not pay attention, for the committee of the whole Superintendent Cole or Mr. Shamlin, I believe we chose for, for item C or F, or number C. Look, I was about to say alphabet C. For FC, we had the choice or the option out of keeping our current extension or renewal policy, which is the three to five years, or engaging in the seven-year renewal or the 10. And am I correct in saying that we chose the seven-year? Okay. And that was by majority vote and it was not all of us, but it was by majority, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then also I just wanted to ask as well, in our suggested revisions, I know that we talked about making sure that we're streamlining and that we are solidifying the, the request or the expectation in our policy, our charter school policy in regards to special education, transportation, and those areas where there were some gaps. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul Lewis. Mr. Goday.
Yes, just to piggyback on a little bit of that, I want to address, Ms. Nyman brought up a point about the, the change in state law that allows the aggregate score, the aggregate of subgroups to stand for each individual school as a pass or fail. We have tried to address that in our policy because our policy does have provision that yes, they will, they do that, but, because that's state law, we can't do anything about it. But we have added a provision that for every school that does not meet individually, that we want a plan from that school as to what they're going to do to try to meet that and also have the plan in there that includes up to and including preference in, in the lottery system for that. So I think we're addressing that as well as we can with what the tools that we have given to us. The other thing I'd like to address is I heard several comments in there about why, why are these charters coming up and, and we're sitting, closing schools and why is there demand? Unfortunately or fortunately, however you want, I'm not going to take a side on it, the need or demand for seats is not in the charter law. We can deny a charter, but then that same charter could then turn around and go right to Bessie and get a Type II charter, of which there are already, I think, five on the agenda for next year, Type II charters in front of Bessie that reside in EBR. And so it comes down to, do we want to have any control over these charters or do we want to just punt everything to Bessie and let Bessie run the school district, which slowly puts our district out? And so while I'm sympathetic to the need that maybe we don't need all these seats, recognize that some of this is the lesser of two evils in what you get to. And so turning them down, I see Ms. Nyman shaking her head, but turning them down only puts the issue to Bessie and Bessie will probably approve them, given the current political culture. So just understand that we understand all of these issues. We don't have supreme power to decide them the way I think that might be best for the students and this parish, but we're trying to do the best that we can with the tools that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. And to sum up what Mr. Goday just said, Ms. Nyman, it's coming whether we want it or not. Mr. Lewis.
I'd like to respond to the, I think it was an online comment and they talked about children who make up the majority of the magnet schools. You'd be surprised to find out how many of our magnet schools are populated by kids who are considered economically disadvantaged. You know, I kind of had that same mindset. And on yesterday, I had the opportunity to sit next to Ms. Wright, Dr. Wright, at a wonderful program at DU-FROK. And we had this exchange about economic disadvantage, charter schools, the whole nine yards. And she invited me very candidly to come to her office and she could show me in black and white the numbers of how many kids who are qualified as economically disadvantaged that are in our magnet schools. So that's a myth that we need to do away with. Now, there's some... Now, there's some, well, I'll just leave it like that. I don't want to talk about too much what we talked about because it was a personal conversation about educating children in this district and what we need to do to get to the place we need to be. Children, whether they're economically disadvantaged or not, who are in our magnet schools, Dr. Wells, they're, Principal Wells, they're like, are you the doctor or the principal? Just the principal? Okay, good. Well, you got the hard job then. The doctors have the easy jobs. What you're doing with those parents, you're helping those parents actually put their kids on the right track to, to, to get to those schools. I watch my youngest daughter do it. I watch my son do it. That's why we have to educate our parents in a way that they're not dependent on this body or charter school body or something that's shiny and new. If they're going to make choices, let them make informed choices, not just dangling something in front of them that looks good, and by the end of the semester, they're matriculating back because, well, that maybe wasn't the best choice. So, but again, our populations in our magnet schools are very diverse across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any other board members? All right, no other public comments. All right, moving along. Madam Secretary, I'm sorry, voice vote, I'm sorry. All those in favor of the consent agenda, aye?
Aye.
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 All those in opposition? Vote in opposition, and the vote is now up. Madam Secretary has already have it up. Why does it say Louisiana State? It say Louisiana State University?
Yeah, that's the, that's the one he put it so you get the cases.
I know, but it came up as far as like I was voting. Thank you. Now moving to item one on the consent agenda, the res, oh, I'm sorry. Oh. Moving along to item one, resolution bond purchase, consideration of a request for the approval of the bond purchase agreement for the sale of 40 million limited tax bond Series 2025 and to adopt the resolution providing for the incurring of debt and issuance of the bonds, thereby authorizing the issuance and delivery of the bonds and related matters. Now, I do have public comments. First public comment from Mr. Jamie Robinson. Come on down.
The justification for passing the bond sale is faulty, to say the least. The argument has been EBR is making a final payment to their previous low-interest and no-interest bond assumed 15 to 10 years ago, and will therefore have an additional $3.5 million available in its budget to make the payments towards a 40-million-dollar bond sale at an interest rate no higher than 6%. However, if St. George School District is approved by voters in April, EBR will ultimately lose approximately $7 million in tax revenue from that 5.25 millage. The St. George School District is not guaranteed to be approved, but nonetheless, the East Baton Rouge Parish school system may likely face a $7 million loss rather than a $3.5 million gain. And its school board, if this school board passes this bond resolution now and commit the district to these payments, and St. George is approved by voters in April, the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board or system will face a $10.5 million reduction in available funds. This is something that you really have to watch. This is something that you really have to study. I implore you all to do the same thing, to take the same stance you did when we, when it was time for us to consider redistricting. You say, well, we don't know what needs to be done because we don't know all the facts. We need to study. We need to educate ourselves. Surely, you're going to respect your constitutional responsibility of being a school board member and making sure that you're good financial stewards of our budget. Certainly, you're going to do that. Certainly, you're going to consider losing millions of dollars when our general, general funds at local schools are not good at all, to the point where we have to have so many school-based fundraisers to make sure children have opportunities to go on field trips or have the resources that they need. Surely, you'll consider the fact that we need to have a sustainable, a raise, a raise for teachers that are permanent, something that you don't have to keep bringing before the, before yourselves each and every year. Why we keep throwing money away? Let's do the right thing. Take the same stance. This is a bad idea. This is not something we can do now. And also, you say, well, we don't know what's going to happen with St. George, so let's not waste money. Let's not redistrict right now. You still don't know what's going to happen with St. George. Let's not waste money. You need it. The children need it. Do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next, we have Ms. Tibby Jackson.
Just to piggyback off of what Mr. Robinson said, there is, I'm sorry. I just want to piggyback off of what Mr. Robinson said about the insufficient information that we have to determine the merits of assuming this debt. I do appreciate that there are times when assuming debt is not just necessary but beneficial, but in order to determine if this is such an occasion, school board members and the public need to know the list of projects and their estimated costs. This has not been thought through. Still more information is needed. Please understand, $40 million at 5.95 interest over 20 years means the school board is committing the East Baton Rouge Parish School District to paying nearly $30 million in interest alone to their creditors, not towards renovations, projects, or teacher raises, or special programs for children, $30 million towards interest. That's not fiscally responsible to, to commit our, our school district to that amount of money. Do any of these projects on the list warrant committing the district to spending that much on interest alone? I do not know because I have not seen the list. We have no information on how this money is going to be spent. I read in the newspaper that it's going to go to high schools. They're submitting lists to the superintendent. What about our elementary schools? They need things as well. Ms. Stewart, I walked past Park Forest Elementary, and it's the same unsafe equipment that's been there since my child was six and we moved in a neighborhood. She's 26. They want equipment.
No, they got equipment. They got.
No, I just walked by this.
No, no, it's been approved.
Okay, good.
They need it. I made a certain.
I'm happy to hear that. All right. The question of wood lawn, we talked about St. George pulling out. The problem if wood lawn is on this list, because again, we don't know, the project, after the election, the voters rejected, they reject that the bond application stipulates that the school board will only make improvements to areas within that jurisdiction at the time of improvements are made. This means there is an 18-month loophole from the time that the proceeds of the bond sale are available to the district in December 2025 and the possible separation of St. George. Don't waste our money. Use this money, use this opportunity. It's not free money. Is this the same board that voted unanimously, unanimously to approve ITEP? That's free money. That's money from taxes. That's money from big business. But then you ask the public to continue to approve, to renew taxes. It's not fair to the public to stifle us with this debt. It's not fair to us and then to give ITEP. So be the same board that voted to give ITEP tax breaks to say that this is not responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We have Ms. Newman, Ms. Tanya Newman. Nyman, I'm sorry, Ms. Nyman.
That's the finished pronunciation, actually. So you just, yes, hi, Tanya Nyman. So I want to reiterate, yes, that it is, the justification is faulty because of the potential loss of revenue if St. George happens, and also that there is insufficient information. We cannot really determine if taking on this level of debt warrants is, has merit because we don't know what the projects actually entail. But I want to reiterate about the question of wood lawn. What really needs to be clear is that they can't take advantage of that loophole that is in the bond application. The bond application does stipulate that the school board will only make improvements to areas within their jurisdiction at the time the improvements are made. This means there is an 18-month loophole from the time that the proceeds of the bond sale are available to the district in December 2025 and the possible separation of the St. George School District, which would occur in fall of 2027. If work on wood lawn is completed during that window, St. George gets its newly improved facility without having to assume responsibility for the debt. They would be spared the need to raise their own millage in order to be approved for a bond sale. This is harmful to the EBR school system for two reasons. One, because it saddles that, the EBR school district with the debt for the project with no firm guarantee that St. George would fairly repay it. And two, because it obfuscates the harm the proposed new district would cause all taxpayers. If created, the St. George school system's annual share of that 5.25 tax millage will only be approximately 7 million. That is likely insufficient for them to qualify for any bond sale. They appear to be unprepared to complete these types of projects on their own without levying a property tax millage on their residents. If that were to become known before the vote in April, it becomes even less likely that voters will approve the creation of the new school district. This bond sale becomes a vehicle for obfuscating, obfuscating that fact and therefore a means of facilitating the creation of yet another breakaway school district in East Baton Rouge Parish. That doesn't just harm the EBR parish school system, that harms all the children in this parish, particularly the most vulnerable ones. So I just want to reiterate that. Like, there really needs to be a stipulation that wood lawn cannot be considered for a completion of the project until after that vote in April, and that if voters in St. George approve the creation of the school district, that wood lawn be withdrawn from any consideration for those projects and any funds being spent on that school, and that it be made clear to the people in St. George that they understand that they don't really have the tax base to support their school system at this time. That that is one of the benefits of big school systems, the economies of scale that allows you to borrow money at hopefully low interest rates and the ability to complete those big projects. Smaller school districts are insufficient, and that people need to be made aware of that. Thank you. And I'll give these out.
Thank you, Ms. Nyman. I want to have Attorney Shamlin speak to, oh, oh, okay, okay, oh, I'm sorry. We have online comments first. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
F1, resolution bond purchase from Sean Weish. As a St. George resident, I'm concerned that this bond could create an unfair financial situation for both St. George and East Baton Rouge Parish. The bond language says that the school board can only make improvements to area within their jurisdiction at the time the improvements are made. That creates an 18-month window between when the bond funds become available in December 25 and when a potential St. George school district could take effect in fall of 2027. If wood lawn projects move forward during that window, one of two things happen, neither good. Either St. George inherits the upgraded school without assuming the debt, leaving EBR taxpayers to cover the bill, or the debt follows the facility and St. George begins its new district millions in the red with no realistic way to finance future projects without raising property taxes. This bond, if used before voters decide in April, hides those risks and misleads the taxpayers about the true cost of forming a new district. Thanks. And another one from Ms. Kathy Carmichael, and I think she and Mr. Robinson must have read the same one. The justification for passing this bond is faulty. The agreement has been EBR makes, making final payment to their previous low-interest and no-interest bonds assumed 10 to 15 years ago and will therefore have an additional $3.5 million available in its budget to make the payment towards the $40 million bond sale at an interest rate no higher than 6%. However, if the St. George School District is approved by the voters in April, EBR will lose approximately $7 million in tax revenue from that 5.25 millage. The St. George school system is not guaranteed to be approved, but nonetheless, EBR public schools will likely face a $7 million loss rather than a $3.5 million gain. And if the school board passes this bond resolution now and irrevocably commits the district to these payments and St. George is approved by voters in April, the EBR school system will face a $10.5 million reduction in available funds. And that concludes the online comments.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. Can we have Attorney Akers please come up to speak to some of the concerns that persons have in regards to projects being started and how that affects if St. George School District is initiated? Thank you. Yeah, you're going to.
Would you talk about the process and timeline as well in terms of the bond issuance?
Yeah, I'd certainly be glad to. Thank you. I'm Jason Akers. I'm with Foley Newell. We're a pleasure, honored to serve as your bond counsel on this transaction. Before I begin, let me just recognize Whitney Laird, who's with Stiefel Nicholas. They're the underwriter. They're one of the top 10 underwriters in the country. They have a very strong presence here in Louisiana. And DeeDee Riggins, who's with Government Consultants, sitting in the back with me as well, municipal advisor to the school board and has been involved in providing financial advice with respect to this transaction. They're one of the largest financial advisory firms with respect to municipal entities in the state of Louisiana also. So that's your team who's working on this process for you. So the process, as you have gone through it up to now, is that you adopted a preliminary resolution. State Bond Commission gave its approval. We're coming to you now for the final approval by adoption of this resolution. Then we will get out into the market and sell bonds. We do not know what the interest rate is going to be right now. There is a not-to-exceed rate, but based on current market conditions, and the three of us have talked about this, based on the current market conditions, we're anticipating that that rate will produce a cost of interest over the 20-year life of the bonds of approximately $20 million. So $40 million in proceeds, $20 million in, in interest, that's approximately $3 million each year that you're going to be paying in debt service. That matches not 3.5, but the 3 million that you're paying now. So at $3 million a year, $20 million annually in debt service. What I would ask you is, by not doing those projects, and I'm just saying projects in general, not getting into the specifics, by not doing those projects and to try to bank that money and pay as you go here, what is the inflationary cost going to be with respect to the cost of those projects? And I would be willing to bet that what you've seen in the last five years with inflationary costs in construction projects is going to continue that pace, and you're most likely not going to be able to afford all of these projects over a 20-year period. So notwithstanding the payment of interest, you could get those projects, and you could do those projects now. This is the form that most, for financing capital improvements, that most other school boards take throughout the state. This is a very common vehicle that is used for the issuance of bonds to fund projects at the current timeframe and paying interest over the, over the course of the bond issue so that you know that you have those projects done and you are able to do them at a cost that is affordable for you. But to address a few of the things that were, that were discussed with respect to St. George, actually, the numbers with respect to the amount of tax that would be lost per this tax, this 5.25 mils, is exactly the numbers that match what we were given by the parish successor. I imagine that information came from our State Bond Commission application. It's approximately $7 million that this tax is going to lose if you proceed with the bond issue. I'm sorry, if, I'm sorry. It's $7 million this tax is going to lose if St. George is created. I apologize for that misstatement. If St. George is created. This tax currently is estimated to bring in approximately $27 million in the coming year. $7 million less gets you to $20 million. At $3 million a year in debt service, this tax is anticipated to produce, to have a nine times coverage ratio. If St. George is created and that $7 million goes away, it's going to have just below a seven times coverage ratio. And just to put it in perspective, there's a concept in public finance called an additional bonds test. An additional bonds test is at what level will investors not be comfortable that you have over-leveraged a tax? And a 1.35 or 1.5 test is typical. Two-times test is considered not just by us and not just by the underwriters, but by the rating agencies to be incredibly strong. You're going to have over six, almost seven times coverage with this tax, even if St. George is created. But notwithstanding that... Really, one, first, is just a matter of timing. If you wait, the process is that there's an election held on April 30. If it is approved, then correct, St. George comes into effect against educating students July 1 of 2027. During that time, there is an analysis done, and I'm, by a committee that I'm assuming is members of both EBR schools and the coming St. George schools, that will analyze the value of the assets that are to be transferred to St. George and the value of the liabilities that are to be transferred to St. George. There are costs that you're going to save as well. Costs of not having to run those, I believe it's nine schools, if I'm not mistaken. Costs of not having to run those nine schools. Costs of not having to educate those students that are going to now be St. George students. Costs of not having to pay pension costs, other post-employment benefits for those employees that were formerly East Baton Rouge Schools employees but are now going to be St. George Schools employees. So there are cost savings that go along with it. I think we don't absolutely know what those are, but if you waited until we found out what those costs were going to be, that's not, and waiting until April 30. That's actually waiting probably until July 1 of 2027 to give that committee that time to do that analysis that it has to do. So that, one, puts you an additional, basically, two years from now until you would be proceeding with these improvements that you're talking about producing. The second thing with respect to St. George is the Woodlawn question, and I think this is really one where I don't know that I can provide an answer to you. This is a question that really is a decision of where to spend the funds, and I know that's a process that you're undertaking right now. The statement is correct. The school board cannot and will not spend money on a project outside of its jurisdiction. And there is a gap there between what we're talking about right now and when that, when that St. George School District would go into effect, assuming that it does. And that actually is just a decision for the board to make of what might be spent there and then how that can be remunerated from the potential creation of St. George. Unfortunately, that's one where I can't give you an answer. That's really a board decision for you. But just skipping ahead, proceeding, let's just continue with the resolution. If you do give your approval to it today, our goal is to get out into the market in the month of November. We have undergone the rating process. We anticipate that we're going to hear tomorrow what that rating is going to be. You currently have an A-plus rating from Standard and Poor's. We have no indication that they're going to change that, but we'll report that back to you as soon as we know. A-plus is a very strong rating, very strong rating for a school board, especially in Louisiana. And this is a good time for you to get out in the market and get those funds available and start using them to make those improvements for the various facilities within your jurisdiction. So that's my summary of the resolution and responses to what you've heard so far. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can for you, to the extent I can, and Whitney or DeeDee can, I'm sure they'd be happy to come up as well.
And we do have questions. Ms. Paula Lewis.
I don't have a question. I have more comments.
Stay near though.
So are we on to board comments?
Yeah, we're on to board.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I just want to share a couple of things. I'm gonna start here. Thank you, Ms. Nyman, for giving us this document. The first two pages say, "Concerns About The Proposed Bond Sale." So of course, I'm assuming that these have been formulated by Ms. Nyman, okay, and other people. All right. The next page, the next page has, in the middle of the page, it says, "Regular Annual Amortizing Loan Payments." I'm not sure where this document came from. Okay. And then the next four pages say, "State Bond Commission, Local Political Subdivisions, Bonds, Final Approval." This is obviously an official document, but deep down into the pages is...
That's the bond application. The amortization, I didn't have time to get that from Ms. Lopez, and so I just tried to use a calculator online with the terms that y'all had and your payment plan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. But in this, it says, "Estimated," "estimated," very similar to what the gentleman who just came to the mic said that these are estimates, okay? So I just wanted to state that because I'm sure, like I said, the first two pages are opinions based on fact. That's what we teach kids in social studies, right? Okay. All right. And then, just wanted to share some other things. Majority of us have served on this board since January 2023, majority, okay? And in that, I have heard things about tax plans and schools not being able to get facilities that they want. I've heard people, including myself, talk about permanent pay raises for teachers and for support personnel. I've also had the opportunity to visit several schools in leadership capacity and not in leadership capacity. Two, of course, that are within my district at this time include Estrema High School, where when I went to visit with them around the first few days of school, they have the bleachers pulled out to try to hide a place where they're missing the gym floor. They're not scaled to be the next school on the tax plan. Scottlinville High School, which is in my back door, I'm a part of their alum organization because I'm an alum, but every time I go, I am listed as a school board liaison and they want to hear from me every time about what we are doing as far as the tax plan is concerned in regards to HVAC in the fieldhouse. I was visiting a family member in Sharon Hills, and I passed by Sharon Hills Elementary, and I was like, "It looks like it's been a long time since that school has had some repairs." And that's not all. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. Sir, I don't know your name. I don't remember what you said, but I do remember meeting the ladies in the back at the LSBA conference because they were there. Am I correct? Or y'all were in Lake Charles the last time I went. I remember seeing you. And then I know that we question a lot of things about what's going to happen with St. George and whether or not they will take on any of these concerns. I've heard our constituents, including Ms. Nyman, ask questions about what will these funds be used for, and I'm sure Mr. Cole, I'll pass that, the mic to you in just a moment. But I will tell you this as well. I asked Mr. Cole yesterday on a different conversation, if you're okay with me sharing. I called him and I asked him, "If we said no to every ITEP item moving forward, would it be enough to cover the work that we're trying to do in the district? Would it be enough to cover either infrastructure or would it be enough to cover salary increases?" And Mr. Cole, what was your answer?
It depends on the amount of tax abatement that the companies are seeking to have. If that amount is in the area of $52 million over an extended period of time, it would be enough to cover permanent raises. But if it's in the amount of $20,000 here, $100,000 there, it would be enough to support small projects at certain schools or in a district, but it really depends on the amount of the tax abatement itself. And those tax abatements are not going to come in grand scale. I personally know a great deal about ITEP, having worked on the city council and written the ITEP rules back in 2018 to 2022. One of those years, they all run together. So I understand the desire of the local government and local school board as well as the sheriff's office to really evaluate, you know, those tax abatements. But the reality for me is, that's one conversation. The other conversation is, how do we make the improvements we need to make for our kids right now?
In real time?
In real time. So the ITEP conversation is one that I think has to be explored based on every ITEP that comes, but that conversation doesn't lend itself to being able to provide the support and the resources for the kids right now.
Thank you. So that's two different pockets. Number one, Madam President, we are attempting to remain germane to the topic, right? Okay. So then the other is, if we are making improvements in real time, then that means we don't have the time to wait. Okay? So with all of that being mentioned, Mr. Cole, if you'll share with us, what is the process for how these funds will be used?
Well, I want to be clear. As the idea came to me and I had conversations with Ms. Lopez and we really, and Mr. Crochet, and we started talking to Mr. Akers, there is a very specific timeline for how the bond process works. And so for me and my conversations with all of you, what I said to you in a very transparent way, we will give the principals, their staffs, and their school communities an opportunity to evaluate what they need on their school campuses and then make that request to us. And then the committee will determine, based on a very, very comprehensive process we have, what those schools need. And then we would bring those projects to you for approval before we do anything. Mr. Akers assured me, if the resolution is passed, we don't have to spend the money. Is that correct? We don't have to spend the money if it's passed.
I'm sorry. Let me make sure I follow the question. If the resolution is passed, you can still, Mr. Superintendent, you can choose not to proceed with the issuance of the bond.
Yes, sir. So having, understanding that, I did not want to go to schools and say to them, "Create a list, send them to us," on the idea that the board might approve us going after the bond. I wanted to make sure that this board approved us going after, which it did. And then after the board approved it, we said, "Let's go through a comprehensive process so that those projects are to us and we can present that to the board in November at our retreat. We can say, 'Here's a selected recommendation for the projects.'" And then the board would then have time to say yay or nay to those projects, and then we could determine whether we spend the money. So based on the timing of the bond issuance and the process of the bonds and the time we started having a conversation, this is where it's all coming together in an effort to provide the students with what they need. And I keep using our students, because this conversation is not based on what adults have said to me. This conversation is strictly based on what high school students have said to me over and over and over again at every single high school that I have visited. There is a YouTube video online right now of me having a very candid conversation with some students at Scottlinville High School, and that is something that comes up. Why do we always have to wait for our athletic facilities, our locker room? Why don't we have lights on our stage? Why don't we have curtains and things of that nature? Why don't we have those things? And I said to them, "I'm working on trying to get you those things right now." On the, this is going to be somewhat controversial, but I'm gonna say it, on the idea of St. George, I don't think anyone up here in this room understands that process more than me. But here's the reality of the situation. They are our students now.
Absolutely.
They are our students today. And I have a responsibility to the students we serve today to not leave them out of the equation, not the politics. I understand the politics. Trust me, I understand the politics more than most around St. George, but when it comes to our students, there are no politics. They are our students today. They attend our schools, and they have said to me they have needs, the same way the students at Scottlinville High School, at Estrema High School, at Capital High School, at Bel Air High School, at my alma mater, Tara High School, that needs a track desperately, and I've been working on getting them a track for 10 years. I have been working with Tara to try to get them an all-weather track because I think the kids deserve to practice and run on a track. We have to do what's right by our students. Now, again, that's my opinion as superintendent. As we start to talk about the politics, I have a whole nother perspective about that. But when we talk about children, I cannot leave. I cannot even consider leaving Woodlawn out of the equation because we have students who attend our schools right now, who I see every time I visit Woodlawn, who say to me, "When you coming to help us get our football field, Mr. Cole? We got two, we get, somebody gets hurt on the football field every week. When are you going to come assist us?" And for me, I have to always think about separating those two conversations. I got to think about the children we serve now, and I cannot say to them, "Because of other challenges we might have around the politics, I got to leave y'all out." I cannot dare say that to them. So I understand that there are members of our community who are very concerned about what's going to happen. I think about it every night. I talk to Kelly about it every day almost about what's going to happen if the St. George School System is approved. How is it going to impact our school system? But that conversation for me is separate from how do we pursue upgrades to the high school experience now? Because the reality of the situation is this, if we as a board and I as superintendent and the staff make the appropriate investments in our programs at our schools right now, there would be no need for a St. George School System. If we make the appropriate investments into our schools and make sure our kids have what they need, no one would be trying to leave. And that's what I'm trying to create, a world-class school system where every student, and when they walk into their school, is proud, excited, and does not want to leave. And when the children start saying to their parents, "You're not going to take me out of my school," that's a whole different level of politics. When the children start dictating where they want to go to school and why they want to go to school, and I desperately want to give them an experience they can be proud of at every single one of our high schools so they don't even think about leaving. They start crying, they start fighting and scratching, they start wanting to go live with relatives so they can stay in our schools. And even then, parents and those who live in the area of St. George start thinking about, they've made the type of improvements we definitely desperately asked them to make for our schools. We got to think very differently about how we want to proceed. Maybe that's controversial, maybe people don't like it, but I had to be honest in thinking about our children.
On that note, I had other questions, but I'm gonna leave those be for now. I will say that it just sounds like we're, there's a path, you know? And there are certain things that have to happen, there are certain steps that have to happen to get us to that place. What I will say to the community is this, that right before I walked in here, I had principals calling to tell me that they are putting together their list because our school system has already, our administrators, our leaders have already begun to ask them what it is that they desire, what is it that their school campuses desire. And so to be able to say, "We're going to say no to this," and there are principals out there who are hearing from their teachers and hearing from their students and hearing from their communities, I don't even know what to say to that. So thank you once again, Mr. Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Paula Lewis. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. There's a couple of hard acts to follow. I agree with everything that my colleague, Ms. Paula Lewis, said. Certainly agree with everything the superintendent said. I want to make a couple of points because this is, in my day job, I work with large construction projects that involve significant capital financing in the form of tax-exempt bonds. And so, yeah, Mr. Akers pointed out the inflationary costs, and that's a very real thing. Every year, construction costs go up, 2%, 3%, 5%, 7%, some years 8% or more. And the longer you wait to say, "Hey, yeah, we're going to do this," the more expensive your project is going to become. Just so fiscally, it's responsible to do it now, not wait three years to do this, given the needs. The superintendent's point, of course, is the far more important one, which is, not a one of us has gone to schools in this district and gone, "Oh, these are great facilities." I mean, our brand-new schools that we built in the past 10 years for the, with the tax plan, yeah, those are great. The schools that were built 40, 50 years ago, they are not. We know they're not. We've had the facilities assessments done that say, "These schools are in awful shape and we should be embarrassed to send our children there." They are not, they need improvements. Every school needs some different kind of improvement. For some, it's the HVACs. For some, it's a roof. For some, it's the gym floor. For some, it's the track. For some, it's two or three of those, combinations of those things. They need these improvements. They do not need to wait for two years, three years, till the political situation changes or whatever. It's our responsibility to take care of these kids and the environment in which we're asking our great teachers to educate these kids needs to be better than it is. I'd also point out that these taxes are not just paid, this property tax is not just paid by, you know, individual consumers, individual homeowners and whatnot. This is a property tax on every property owner in this district, including the ExxonMobil's and the other major industries. They're not immune from property taxes. They're, we give them some reduction in their property tax due for new plan expansions, but anything that's there that was done before ITEPS were granted, anything where an ITEP was granted and it's ended, they'll pay this tax on the value of their property there. I think the final point, Superintendent, just for clarity, you don't get to just decide yourself what... decide yourself what projects to spend on. All the projects that, that, all your proposals for projects will come back to this board for approval. Is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we've got plenty of time for the democratic process to play out with those. We don't have the luxury of waiting because of the, the, the schedule that you and Mr. Akers discussed. We don't have the luxury of waiting for that. So with that, I move approval of this item.
Second.
I have approval by Mr. Martin and I have a second by Ms. Powell Lewis, but we also have still comments in the queue. Mr. Gode.
Thank you. I can echo a lot of what's said, particularly around the inflation side, because I've argued for years that, that we have wasted tons of money in our tax plan by not bonding out some of that revenue and moving some projects forward. And I was consistently stymied by the thing of, we sold this as a pay-as-you-go. And no one wanted to, I guess, it would have been difficult legally to change that. But we have wasted millions and millions and millions of dollars where we just, by not spending the money early, we could have avoided, just look at all the costs that went up in the pandemic. We could have avoided all of that had we bonded out some of these projects and not only saved money, we'd have gotten kids in better facilities sooner. So I, I think it's a, I think it's a real flaw in how we've thought about all this by not going to bond it. I understand that at the time that all of that was done, there, there, the political atmosphere was, pay-as-you-go was the selling point. I get it. But I hope after 30 years or 40 years of tax plans, we've gotten beyond that. But I do have one technical legal question, because some of the comments around here have, have brought that up. When I read Act 234, which sets up the St. George School District, in there, it talks about bonded indebtedness from the EFID or RFID. What is it? EF, EFID?
EFID.
EFID. This money is not going to the EFID. This money is going to the school board?
The school.
Okay, so whatever provisions in there for the EFID don't apply. But in the, the rest of the provisions say here, that, I'm gonna quote from here real Give me two seconds here. No later than June 1, 2027, East Baton Rouge, oh, that's educational facilities, I'm sorry. No later than 60 days after the effective date of this act, the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, and no less than 60 days, okay? East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the St. George Community School Board shall meet jointly and begin the process to determine the fair and equitable division of all assets and liabilities related to formation of the school district, blah, 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 blah. Two school boards will mutually agree on an actuary appraiser, da, 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 da. The date of the valuation shall be the effective date of this act. The effective date of this act is, if it passes, the date of the election. And so because of that, I think, and I'm gonna vote for this and we need to do it, but we need to be very careful. Should that pass, we need to get agreement from this whatever group that St. George puts together that they accept a liability for any money we spend in St. George. If not, we could spend the money and they say, we, we don't want to pay it. So we, I'm just saying, we need to be very careful on the timing and how we do this. If it, if the vote fails, there's no problem. If the vote passes, the valuations are as of that date. And if we haven't spent the money as of that date, even though we'd spend it before July 2027, we could be on the hook for it legally unless they agree to take it. And so I'm just pointing out that we need to be extremely careful as to how we do that. And if that passes, we're gonna need, we need to make it very clear that if we do the upgrades to Woodlawn, we need to do that with the agreement and approval and help of whatever the new St. George Community School District is. Because they are going to have the, they're going to have the final say of whether or not we go do it. Because they, I mean, they wouldn't expect us to do it if we weren't going to get paid back for it. Am I correct in that?
I believe you are, yes.
Okay.
And that, you know, and again, I don't want to get into specifics about St. George, I think we've talked enough, but there would be negotiations around all assets and all debts related to the school system in every aspect, including what we're talking about tonight.
But the key, the key here is that the law says valuation as of the date-
Of the date of the act.
As of the date of the act, which is the date of the election.
Correct.
Okay? And if we spend the money after the date, because I doubt we're going to spend money, that much money between now and April.
Right.
And so we need to make sure if we spend any money on Woodlawn after April, it's with the approval and acceptance of the liability of whatever this new St. George School District Board is. Okay? I just wanted to make sure that was clear and have that in the record. I'm totally in favor of this.
Point of information. Yes, look, I'm just going to add to your, your point as well. So if that's the case, it sounds like we need to be proactive in the wording to make sure that, that we have said documents prepared.
I, I don't, I don't think so because those projects got to come for us for approval. And we want to prove them unless we got agreement to do that.
Right.
So I don't want to, I don't want to overcomplicate this.
Yes.
I just want to highlight the sensitivity of what that is.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gode. I appreciate explaining that because that, I think that was some of the concerns that Ms. Nyman and some other persons had in regards of whether or not we would be on the hook for any monies put into any, you know, high school or whatever in St. George. And of course, as we just indicated, that it still has to come before us to be approved. And so ultimately, as a whole, so-
If I'm understanding correctly, the loophole-
Come to the mic, please, Ms. Nyman.
I don't mind you coming up. You can come up, Ms.-
There is no loophole. Please do not use that. There's a, there's a timing window.
Thank you. No, so my understanding then is that between December and April is actually the only window where, you're saying after April, you can actually stipulate that St. George has to agree to-
Between now and April, if we spent the money between now and April, they would automatically have to consider the liabilities. If we spend the money after April, it's got to be with their agreement.
With their agreement.
Right, so you, okay, that, that's-
Thank you, okay.
No, you don't like loopholes.
Okay, so with that being, with that being said, that's all of our comments. All those in favor of the item, vote yea. Oh, say yes, say yes.
Aye.
All those in opposition, Madam Secretary? Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. Moving along to item three, that was also pulled, extern agreement, Louisiana State University, consideration of a request for approval of an amendment to the extern agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agriculture and Mechanical College in the amount of $107,933 to extend the agreement for one year to provide up to six externs, funding source, general fund, Williams, Smothers. And, go ahead.
Madam President, I recuse myself from this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Ms. Powell Lewis, okay. And so do we have any public comments on three?
No.
No online either? Okay, any board comments? No board comments?
I move, we accept.
We have a motion by Mr. Gode, we have a second by Ms. Sule. And all those in favor of the item, can I get a yea?
Yes.
Yes. And those in opposition, I'm sorry, can I get a, no. No one. Madam Secretary? That was quick, you on it, Ms. April?
The motion carries.
Moving along the item, oh, sorry. Moving along to item G, new business, uh, resolution, consideration and adoption of a resolution for the purpose of levering mileage rates to be applied to the 2025 East Baton Rouge Parish tax roll as required by RS 471705A. Ms. Lopez, do I have, hold on.
No comments.
No comments? No comments? Okay. And that's, oh, okay, I'm sorry. No board comments? No board comments? Okay. I get a motion, okay, thank you. I got a motion from Ms. Sule. I got a second by Ms. Powell Lewis. All those in favor of the item, yes?
Yes.
Aye, yeah, aye. All those in opposition, Madam Secretary?
The motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. Moving along to item two, student expulsion, discussion, consideration of a request to appeal a student expulsion. Board members, have you had the opportunity to review the case? Okay, do I have a motion to hear the matter on our next regular meeting?
President Stewart, let's read the item into-
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, you're right. Okay, so, hold up. Yeah, discussion, student expulsion, discussion, consideration of a request to appeal a student expulsion. That's it. And so, do I have a motion to hear the matter at our next regular board meeting? Coach, and do I have a second?
Do you need a second?
Yeah, need to.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Powell Lewis, thank you. All right, so that's that. Moving along, item H, carried out, Ms. Sule.
H, organizational items. One, announcement of meetings. Board retreat to be held on November 1, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. at the Executive Center. Committee of the whole meeting to be held on November 6, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. in the central boardroom. Regular meeting to be held on November 20, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. in the central office
And so before we dismiss, I want to give a kudos on Capital High School, their homecoming is tonight. I'll try to make it after we leave. And of course, the, my alma mater, Southern University, homecoming is this weekend. Kudos. I'm dressed for the occasion tonight, because I won't be in attendance, but just wanted to give kudos. I have homework, guys. So with that being said, this concludes our meeting. And Coach, we are adjourned. Thanks.